I'm just calling the order. No, no, you sit down and you say whatever you have to say to them. So you're ready, Rose? Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the August 23rd, 2016 meeting of the McMinnville City Council. And if I could, please, if I could get Counsel Ruden to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor. This is a time on our agenda that we ask anybody in the audience who would like to speak to the council about anything that is not on our agenda tonight to come forward. A couple of things we cannot talk about. We cannot talk about anything that is in the city's in a matter of litigation. We can't address comments or discuss that. A quasi judicial land use matter such as a zone change, we cannot talk about that. Or a matter scheduled, if we know if there's a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future time, we will not be able to discuss that. But, and I may also limit the duration number of comments. And before I ask people to come forward who may like to talk, again, these meetings are being recorded for MCM Community Access Television. I noticed that KLYC is not here tonight for the live streaming. But if you have a cellphone, we ask you to silence it at this time for the courtesy and respect of others. And if you need to either text, receive or send a text, or receive or send a call, that you go out in the lobby to do it. So that being said, is there anybody who would like to speak to the council on anything that is not on our agenda tonight? Come on forward, Jared. Sign in. You know the routine. Sign in and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jared Miller and I live at 947 Ford Street. Currently, this weekend, I went out and was searching for the petitions to run for the position that you're currently in for mayor. So I went out and I went through all the Ward Three of the southeast side of the southern area between First and all of the neighborhoods in Ward Three to the south area. I didn't choose any businesses. I just chose the local residents introducing myself. I got a lot of feedback considering that none of you I've met before today or before any of the councils that I've been to. So I've got a lot of that from people. Unfortunately, none of you have met me in the time that I've been here. But I would ask, Rose has been helping me very well, if there is a level of agreement that it would be good to have some competition. I understand Scott Hill is running, so it's nice to have met you prior to that as well. And I would love to be able to speak with you alongside you and meet him as well. But I would ask, Rose had talked to me and said that I'm lacking a few signatures. So I'd like to see if you guys would like to continue the discussion for the running of mayor, if you would mind signing eight total. And ask the citizens in the back if anyone would agree that if they would sign it, that would allow me to put the measure on tonight and save me the trouble of having to go back out again. Spent most of my entire weekend doing that to make sure. And I had to have caught it on one of the worst weekends prior to school. Most people were out camping and a whole lot of them wanted their weekend to themselves. So I did get a lot of push and shove, but I did manage to get 70 over the course of three days. And it was just a couple of hours. And I would hope that you would help support me in running this year to allow a little bit more candid discussion. So, and that's all I have tonight.
I will respond to that real quick for you, Jared, is that since we're in the middle of a public meeting right now, but being that we do have pre and public elections in the United States, that if you want to, that after, after the meeting is over and the official meeting's over, since your petition can be signed from anybody in the whole city and not just the particular Ward Three,
Yes, sir.
You can ask anybody here on the council if they would like to sign your petition.
I'll even give the whole speech if I need to, but I understand the end of my quote when I was going door to door was, "A yes or no is fine with me. I'm not going to bother you anymore of your time." So, I appreciate it.
So you could, yeah, say after the public meeting's over, you can ask each little council or something if they would like to sign your petition.
And for the record, when I was out, the word solicit has been identified very clearly to me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jared. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the council on anything that is not on our agenda tonight? One more time, last chance. Anybody like to speak to anything that's not on our agenda tonight? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on. Counselors, in your consent agenda, we had the minutes of the May 10th, 2016, City Council Dinner and regular meetings, and the May 18th, 2016 Budget Committee Meeting. We had four resolutions. Resolution 2016-59, which was approving a three-year agreement with Day Wireless for maintenance on the public safety radio system. Resolution 2016-60, a resolution approving Task Order Number One to the Personal Services Contract for the final design of Northwest Hill Road Transportation Bond Measure Project. Resolution 2016-61, a resolution authorizing the release of a portion of the existing public utility easement located in the city of McMinnville, Yamhill County, Oregon. And Resolution 2016-62, a resolution approving the acquisition of property for McMinnville School District 40 and Citizens Bank for the Fifth Street Transportation Bond Project. And for those that are in our audience that have not attended a city council, while this is something we're doing in our consent agenda, any resolutions that I read in our consent agenda are normally considered housekeeping-type resolutions, but the council can ask to have a specific resolution pulled off the consent agenda for discussion. But other than that, the consent agenda will be approved as one. So I'll start with Al and Alan. Do you have anything you'd like to pull off the consent agenda?
I do not, Mayor. Thank you.
Rennie?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Hill?
No.
Counselor Menke?
No.
Counselor Yoder?
Counselor President Jeffries?
No.
Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda, smoothed by Counsel Menke. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Yoder. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that the consent agenda hasn't been approved, Rose. That will take us into our new business. We have one piece of new business tonight, and I know there's some people here to listen to the presentation. It's basically for the city council on our emergency preparedness plan. But if anybody would like to have any questions after Mr. Cummins gets done with his presentation, I will just ask the audience if anybody has any questions or comments. And you can, that way, since we have the subject matter here, the expert, he can address any questions. So, that being said, Doug, are you, are you ready to go?
First of all, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to come and talk to you. It's been a while since I've
been here. Sign in and state your name.
Okay. My name's Doug Cummins, and I am the Emergency Management Coordinator for the city of McMinnville. So, the PowerPoint here, here's what I'd like to kind of go over in the short time period that I've got. I want to look at the past, where we've been, look at some of the things that we have accomplished since the last time that I was here, and look at some things that we want to accomplish moving forward. When we were, last year, was 2010. And in 2010, that was right after the Emergency Operations Plan, our EOP, got a complete update. The council passed a resolution adopting it. And then we came back and did an elected officials course, which some of you sat in on. Some of you haven't because you weren't around at that time. Okay? So those are the things that we did in 2010. What we wanted to do was four different things. First of all, we wanted to adopt a continuity of government and continuity of operations plan to make sure that our government operations and our city would continue to operate and thrive after any kind of a disaster. We wanted to support in improving community awareness and information for our citizens, so that when that disaster happens, they're more informed. We wanted to ensure public information releases are coordinated through the Public Information Officer, and we'll talk a little bit about that, what we've accomplished over the last few years. And last, improve communications to the public during emergencies. So those were the things that they, we wanted to do in 2010. So let's take a look and see what all we've accomplished over the last six years. In 2010, 2011, we had every employee at the time go through Incident Command System Training. Some of you even took some of that. And that was so that when we had an incident, a major incident, they could come and help out in the Emergency Operations Center and understand how we manage incidents. Since 2011, ongoing, we have had a Community Emergency Response Team program. First class was held in 2011, and there was 23 people that graduated from that class. Since that time, including the class that's going on, that finishes next Tuesday, we have over 160 people that have been trained. That's not just community members. I had a class for the school district, which included Mary Alice Russell, our superintendent, and there was 23 people from the school district that went through it. With the, some previous people that had taken it from the school district were up to about 30 people within the district that have had it. And they've already got another one planned. Plus, this last summer, in June and in July, August, I've been doing one at Lynnfield, and we have about 30 people there that have been through the program. So we're getting some teams built so that when we have that disaster, as you well know, we don't, there's nobody around. I don't care whether you're in LA, New York, or wherever, no one jurisdiction has enough emergency responders to handle a disaster. And that's what these folks will be able to do, is come and help the fire department and police department during that disaster. In 2013 through 15, we've had some active shooter exercises. We've partnered with Lynnfield College and with the school district and actually done some training for our law enforcement officers and our EMS personnel, and had an active shooter exercise at both locations. The Lynnfield one was in one of the dormitories. In 2015, last summer, we had one up in Lafayette in Washer School, and then at the high school, where they got a chance to see how the police department and fire department EMS folks would be working. In 2014, we hosted an Integrated Emergency Management Course for city and county employees. We brought people from both jurisdictions in, that would be people that would be in the Emergency Operations Center, and they learned how to help manage a disaster when it hits. You look at what's going on down in Louisiana right now. Something like that happened around here, we have some people that are trained on how to handle those things and how to manage that. And that's what this was all about. In 2015, after a little bit of nudging and pushing from me, we helped, or I helped develop an alternative care plan. That is so if the hospital can't be gotten to for whatever reason, whether it's the earthquake and all the bridges are down, there's a big massive pileup in front of it that they can't get around, whatever it is, we now have a plan. It's actually part of the county's plan because it kind of falls underneath the Health Department. But there is now a plan so that we have locations here in town that we can take people to and get them some medical attention. In 2015, and then coming up in October, I actually applied for and was awarded grants through the State Homeland Security Program for a couple of trailers. You probably saw the trailer sitting out here in the parking lot of the fire department for several weeks that had this, the big CERT logo on the side of it. And that's what they're for, is for our Community Emergency Response Teams. Got one for, that will be completed here by the end of September. And then October 1, I was awarded another grant to get another trailer just exactly like that. Those two grants also provided some stuff to help promote the CERT program with classes and some of the other things that are used for it. In 2015, after that Alternative Care Plan was written, the county had, held a full-scale exercise where they actually took the trailers that the county was able to get through a grant and took it to one of the two facilities and set it up. And we actually ran people through it so that we could see where the holes were and so on, what kind of things we needed to refine within that plan. And when they got done, they put together an after-action report and an improvement plan. It went back and the county's going through and finishing that up so that we have that available to us. Also in 2015, the city hired a part-time emergency management coordinator, me. Okay? When I retired from the police department, I think Captain Marks back here, went to the chief and said that they didn't have the time to do it. And then they approached me and asked me if I would come and do it on a part-time basis. And I've been doing it since and having a blast doing it. And we've got a lot of things accomplished throughout the years. I updated the Emergency Operations Plan. And when I say I updated it, I did all the computer work, but it was with help from other departments where the Emergency Operations Plan has been updated. Some cleanup and language and so on was done in it as well. Earlier this year, I assembled position-specific notebooks for the Emergency Operations Center so that if we get a disaster and we get somebody from the city staff that needs to fill a position in that EOC that has not been trained for that specific position, all we gotta do is reach in and pull out a notebook out of the shelf, hand it to them, and it's got the information that they need on that specific position to be able to do that job. Now, is that the best way to do it? No, it's not. But if we don't have anybody else that's been trained for that position, it's better than just stuffing somebody in there and not giving them any kind of training or any information. This last year, there was some electronic stuff that was actually updated in the Emergency Operations Center. For those of you that have been in there and seen it set up, you'll know that there's two screens with LCD projectors, just like there is in here, plus there's three television sets. We only, we used to have only one computer input, so we could show the computers on both screens or all three TVs, but we couldn't separate them. Well, now we can separate them. There's actually two computer inputs, and we can separate the two screens and have actual TV stations showing on the flat-screen TVs in the EOC, which makes it a little bit more versatile, so we can have updates on one and maps on the other and all kinds of different things, configurations, depending on what the person that's in charge of the EOC wants to see up there. I've almost got, with the help, a lot of help from other departments, the city's COOP Plan, which is Continuity of Operations Plan. There's just a few more things that we gotta get done, and I hope by the end of this year, it will be done. And then we can exercise it, make any corrections that we need to, and have it ready to go so that if something happens in one of our departments, let's say City Hall burns down for some reason, the departments that are in there have a plan on where they're going to go and what things they need in order to continue operations. That's what the whole plan's all about. And every department within our city is involved in that. Okay? In 2015 and 16, I've been out doing a lot of presentations to a lot of different groups. I've done some out at Hillside Manor. I've done some for the Chamber of Commerce. There's been a lot of different presentations, the school district and so on, all on disaster preparedness. And along with that, when I'm doing those presentations, I'm also promoting our CERT program so that we can get more people involved. We've had several different information booths about disaster preparedness and the CERT program at different fairs. I've been down a couple of times this year at the farmer's market. I'll be there, not this Thursday, but the following Thursday on September the first. We have a booth at the Low Safety Fair. I was downtown both days for Turkey Rama, all 12 hours of it, all to promote disaster preparedness and get people to start thinking about being prepared and hopefully get some people signed up for the CERT program. And I've, we've actually gotten some people that have signed up for it. A county-wide public information officer consortium was developed, and they've had monthly meetings. Captain Marks is on that, as well as Chief McDermott from the Fire Department from the city. There's people from the county, a couple of different departments over there. They come together and they try and meet monthly to discuss public information-type things. And along with the new city's website, we actually have an emergency management page that's connected to the fire department, which has a lot of different information on there. There are several disaster preparedness brochures that people can get and print off and have available to them. There's information about the CERT program, and the nonsensitive part of the Emergency Operations Plan has been there, or is on that particular page. I invite you to go to the city webpage and take a look at it. And if you have suggestions on what to make it better, I'm more than willing to listen and see what we can do, because I want to make it better than what it is. So you can see in the last six years, we've been pretty busy. A lot of things have happened. So what do we want to do in the future? Well, first of all, the number one priority right now is to complete the COOP Plan for the city. Get it done so we can exercise it and make any improvements on it. We want to continue to promote and deliver our CERT courses and disaster preparedness sessions. I do have a CERT program or CERT course planned in October for our community on three Saturdays. And the school district has already come to me, and they want to do another CERT program. And that's going to be in February and March in the evenings. I want to hold a CERT Train the Trainer course. Right now, there's five of us that are trainers, myself, and I've got four other people. This year, we've done five classes, which is a lot of classes. And I'm burning my instructors out. So I need to get some new instructors, get some new blood in there. I've already lost one because he's moving out of state. And I've already got another one that said that he needs to spend more time with his family. So I've got to start looking for some more people. In order for people to be trainers, they need to go through the course. And so I'm working with Wendy Hackman, who is the coordinator for the county's CERT team, and we're going to do a joint Train the Trainer class after the first of the year. We also need to identify and train our city staff for people within the EOC so that they have an idea before an incident happens, what they need to do, so that we can better manage that. We've got a few people that have already been identified with the help of the police chief and fire chief. And Martha, we've got some people identified to fill some of those positions, one deep, but we actually need to be about three deep on each one of those positions so that we can have multiple people be able to fill in and do that for multiple operational periods. Or, let's say, one of the chiefs is out of town, and they're in one of those positions, and we gotta find somebody to fill those positions. So we need to identify those people and train them. And we need to update and maintain our Incident Command System Training as the city hires new people and do promotions. The, the whole ICS system is built on what you're going to be doing during an incident. So people that are out here in the field need one level of training. People that are in the Emergency Operations Center need a whole lot more training. And so we need to identify those people and maintain and get that training done for those people. I want to hold an informational meeting with adult care facilities within our community, see where they're at for disaster preparedness. What kind of plans do they have in place? I'm afraid that they're going to rely heavily on our city resources, and we're not going to have enough resources to be able to help them. So I want to get them to work with me or me work with them and get their plans to where it's a workable plan. I've actually got the first meeting with them scheduled for the 14th of September, and sent out invitations to about 13 or 14 different facilities within our community. And hopefully, we'll get the majority of them to come in, and we can discuss some of the things that will happen, how the city's going to prioritize things and so on. We need to develop resource options. Where are we going to get resources from? Looking at also planning for shelters. Where are we going to hold the shelters? Who's going to man them? That kind of stuff. This isn't something that's just the city that's doing it. It's, we've got to get our entire community involved with doing this. Because the city, we don't have enough employees to open up these different shelters when we need them. We're going to be busy doing other things. So we need to get some people within our community, some partners, to be able to do that. So we gotta develop those things. And we need to develop a resource list. Where do we get our materials and supplies that we're going to need during a disaster? Where are we going to get food, that kind of stuff for our responders? Because we're going to be working some long hours if it's any kind of a major incident. Need to complete, complete a new Hazard Vulnerability Study so that we make sure that what's in the Emergency Operations Plan as far as our hazards and our vulnerabilities are correct and in the correct order, so that we can adjust accordingly. We need to develop a volunteer management and credentialing process. Now, we have a draft volunteer management plan, but we don't have a credentialing process for that yet. And it's just a draft plan right now. It hasn't been finalized. I've got some people looking at it to hopefully go through it and make recommendations and see if it will work for us and so on. Need to develop a Hazard Mitigation Plan. We have hazards here in town, all kinds of them. There's some things that we can do to help mitigate some of those. Before we can put together a Hazard Mitigation Plan though, we have to do that vulnerability study. And by the way, there's money out there to help with some of that hazard mitigation stuff. We need to complete and adopt a debris removal plan, a pet shelter plan. It's been proven time and time again that a lot of people will not leave their homes unless their pets go with them. Well, guess what? Red Cross shelters will not allow pets in their shelters. So we've got to come up with some kind of a plan. So we've got to get our community partners in again and help to build this plan. And the county has actually, in their budget, put in an emergency notification system that they're going to be purchasing. And we need to work with them so that we have access to that notification system so that we can send out disaster messages to our community when that disaster happens. Does anybody have any questions that I can answer?
I'll start with Alan down there and see if Alan has any.
Yeah, thank you. What would you consider one of the hazard mitigation areas that we have in the city?
December, all that rain that came down with the localized flooding, there's some things that we can do to help alleviate some of that. It wasn't that the Cozine or the Yamhill overflowed its banks that caused all that flooding. It was getting two inches of rain in that short time period, and it just taxed our storm drain system.
Volume.
Yep, volume, yeah. We didn't have enough capability to handle that volume.
Any others that you can think of?
Without going through a true vulnerability study and getting a bunch of people together and look at what we have within the community, it's hard to say. I do know that we have a very high potential of having a major earthquake around here. And you look at some of our older buildings that are in town, they're unreinforced concrete or masonry, and they're going to come tumbling down. And there may be some things that we can do to help with that.
Thank you.
You bet.
Really? Thank you. I had a chance to take a look at the website too, and it looks great, very user-friendly.
Thank you.
Doug, you know, I think it was about a year ago, we had the opportunity through FEMA to go through an emergency exercise through the county, city. What learnings did we get from that, where we were kind of responders to a disaster they put in front of us?
That was that Integrated Emergency Management Course that I talked about. That was that integrated emergency management course that I talked about. It allowed people to get into the different roles within the emergency operations center and actually try and manage that particular incident. You might run things one way, I might run things another way. The chiefs over here are going to run things differently. It all depends on our training and our experience and our thought process. Does it make any one of us wrong? No. But we're going to be handling them differently. So it got a chance for people to get in those positions and actually practice and play that role to see how it feels.
And so some real learnings I would guess from that and the cost being borne by the government that allowed us to do something that we couldn't do on our own.
Correct. That was all free training. FEMA came in here and did that. They brought all the equipment in to do that and it was outstanding. I actually went through the same class, not here. I flew back east to the National Emergency Training Center in Emmitsburg, Maryland and spent two weeks back there, went through that entire course, not just the response and preparation, but also the recovery portion of it as well.
Well, very interested in how we can take our learnings at the city and get that out to communities. And a good place for me that I see would be churches that have congregations that if we get some training with them, then they can become the legs and the eyes and the ears and the arms of what needs to happen while we're doing that. And I'd like to work a little bit with you on getting that going a bit.
And I'm more than willing to go to any group, churches, some of our different groups within the community and talk about disaster preparedness, what they can do, what we can do and what we can do together.
Good. I'll follow up with you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? A quick follow-up to Councilor Hill's question. As a direct result of that IEMC segment, communications between governmental agencies was found to be a weakness. And we received a grant for ham radio operator equipment. So each of the facilities now has, the county, the cities and every fire department has a ham radio operator class.
We did a class on it, yep.
And radios so that in the event we do have a tower go down or power go down, we have battery operated ham operated radios, we can be in contact with state ELC as well as the county ELC. So that was one of the outcomes.
That's a great, because I do know that there are groups out there that have a network of hand operators to keep just in connection. And so to be able then to get ahold of us at the city, county level, state level would be helpful.
And a lot of the CERT people are using amateur radio, ham radio for communications to the ELC to give us information.
Good.
Okay, Larry. I didn't hear you mention it, but I'm sure you've got a plan for a follow-up continuing education type plan for the CERT people?
Yes. Every Monday or every month, on the second Monday of the month, I hold a continuing education class. And it varies on the topics. We've had leveraging and cribbing, which they learn in the basic class, but because of the short time period, they don't get a lot of hands-on experience with it. So we actually had out at Lynnfield with some help from some people out there, we had a chance where they got to do some actual leveraging and cribbing. I've got a couple of other things coming up. Kent Stewart in September is going to talk about survival techniques for mainly wilderness survival, but those same things can be used in town on a disaster. We've got somebody coming in talking about the Cascadia subduction zone, what can happen and so on, talking about disaster psychology. There's something going on every single month.
Is there, do you have somewhere in there where, I know you're training people to be leaders, but what about training the general public for, to prepare themselves for disasters?
That's part of the CERT program. And going out and doing some of these talks and so on is mainly about getting themselves prepared, what they need to do.
How do you get those people to come?
Yeah, well, that's a good question. I wish I knew that. Some of them have been really good, like the ones out here at Hillside Manor. The people out there really promoted it and got a whole bunch of people, not just from Hillside, but from the surrounding neighborhoods that came in and talked. The last one I did out there, we had 50 people there. I've had as few as five people in a talk. So it's kind of hard sometimes. If you've got any ideas, I'm really looking for them.
Well, I just, you know, just from my own experiences, I'm kind of concerned about just the general public and their lack of, their lack of knowledge and what to do.
Yep, and their lack of preparedness. I always ask people when I'm doing these booths and going out and talking to people, how many of you actually have a disaster preparedness kit in your house? I get maybe one or two people that raise their hands. And then I talk to them about why it's important and some of the things that they need to put into it. I don't tell them what all they need to put into it, but some of the major things like food and water and medication and that kind of stuff. Our city is, just like everybody else, all the other cities, the majority of the population is not prepared for a disaster. People down in Florida are because they get hit by hurricanes every year, but around here, a lot of people are complacent.
I'd love to have you come and talk to my Rotary group. I know they were quite interested in this and probably back in 2010 and probably since you've come so far with so many different things, it'd be very interesting to have you come and talk with them again and see what they might be able to do as a group and individually.
Okay, have your speaker coordinator get ahold of me. I'm at the Fire Hall twice a week for the most part.
Do you have a business card?
I do.
Okay, I want one. Thank you.
You bet.
That's President Jeffries.
You think water and light would be cool if they're turning the water and power off for a couple of days? Just to get, I'm just kidding. Wake up, everybody.
Disaster.
No, I appreciate the work that you've done. I had no idea there was so much progress being made since we last, since 2010, since you looked at this.
Believe it or not, I didn't know it either until I started listing all these things out.
You can take credit for all.
I do.
One of the areas that, as I was looking through the plan, that I thought that maybe we might want to look at is an EMP response. This is incredibly, we have nuclear on there, but I think perhaps the EMP might be more probable.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'm also wondering, as far as our response to things, maybe we can do some sort of a, looking outside the cities or in particular around food, what kind of resources there are. So if with the Cascadia or like an EMP, you know, with the farmlands we have around here, could we feed the city? Could we feed our citizens? Because I think, you know, I'm not going to shy away from the fact that I've been reading a lot of books on these topics in the last couple of years and that is the biggest problem. In years past, everyone had their own little victory garden and everyone knew how to garden. That isn't the case anymore. So often it's just so convenient. And with grocery stores having, being restocked almost every single day, I don't think people realize how quickly those supplies can be diminished.
Especially if you have a major Cascadia subduction zone earthquake and you look at our city, you cannot get into our city without crossing a bridge.
Yeah, and whether that's even the case or not, but the fuel, I mean, there's so many, there's so many things that could happen that could make us very isolated here. So, you know, what are our options to be resilient in a situation like that? And as a city, I haven't really seen anything here. What is our plan for preventing a rush on those types of resources? And, I don't know, just, those are some things that I've been thinking about as we looked at this. And the other thing is, have we reached out to the state interagency, the Hazard Mitigation Committee? I know that they, they've presented a hazard mitigation plan. Working for the insurance commissioner, I was appointed as an alternate on that committee and our name came up as one that hadn't been participating in the past, but there are some funds available and there's some resources there. So, I mean, it's been, it's been a while since, because I'm the alternate, I haven't been attending, but when I was there, we did, we were mentioned as not being a part of the plan.
Can I field that question? Historically, the reason we hadn't participated in that was the amount of staff hours that were required to actually, we didn't have a PADI bridge management coordinator at the time and we didn't have the staff hours along with all the other projects that were going on to identify all of the bridges and there wasn't enough staff time to commit to that. Given someone that we have to coordinate it now, it'd probably be a lot easier for us to participate in that level of.
There are some steps though.
I mean, I've seen some of the plans and they're not just about preparedness, but mitigation. And if there's, the way we can be put into those federal asks, be part of those plans could really help.
And that's part of what we have to do. There's some actual steps that we have to go through, complete the vulnerability study, put together a hazard mitigation plan before we can even start looking at getting those federal funds. So that, some of the things that I want to get done, it's not going to be just me. I got to get a bunch of other people involved in it. And if you want to sit on that and help me with that.
Happy to.
I'd be more than happy to have you there.
All right.
I'll write your name down.
The last thing, I just, resilience, resilience, resilience and anything we can do to be more resilient and whether that's, you know, through insurance or education and planning for farming and gardening and there's lots of things we can do to be resilient in these types of issues. I actually had a meeting with Senator Boquist not that long ago. He sits on the senate, he actually chairs the senate veterans and emergency preparedness committees. I'm probably butchering the name of the committee, but the bottom line is, he's been really pushing to try to get, there's so many issues that we deal with on a daily basis. We worry about with our bridges, transportation, commerce and all these things. We have these little tiny fixes for it, but if we were to look at, how can we solve, how can we become resilient for that Cascadia earthquake? If we were to have that be our goal, all these other problems could be solved by focusing on that big goal. And it was really cool to hear him say that because he's kind of a, unfortunately in the minority in that, in that, in that building. And you wouldn't think that was the case, but some, there's a lot of people who don't believe any of these things are really a problem. But I think he's right. I think if we can focus on being resilient with these bigger issues, a lot of these other small relative terms issues become much more manageable and fixed.
Great comments. Let's turn, Alan, you had one more?
Just a quick one. Doug, thank you. And did you mention the date and place and time of that next meeting that you're going to have? You said you're going to.
Which one? The CERT program or the, or I'm bringing the care facilities together?
I think it's care facilities.
Care facilities is September 14th.
Is there any way to get on, notify us on our city email accounts of your meetings that you have planned?
Would it be on the city calendar?
If somebody shows me how to put it on the city calendar, I'd be glad to put it on the city calendar.
It'd be nice to have that and the CERT meetings in October listed on the city calendar.
The CERT program, the October stuff is actually on the website in the CERT program because I've got the schedule and the brochure.
At least as important as rumbo, so I think it could be on there.
You know, Doug, I think I just have a couple of comments, a couple of questions. Number one, great job on this. It keeps me, being back in there in 2010 when we went through it and probably a lot longer before that, before we even knew what an EOP was, an ELC was. You know, being that you're part-time, these kind of plans, the only thing that concerns me, these kind of plans, I think they're the greatest plans, but the plan is only as good as how well it's kept up as change has come. Where do we get, like as you review all these pads and you're out there and you're doing your CERT training and you're the emergency management director, where do all the resources come to update all the plans? I mean, because if you let a plan sit for two years and isn't updated, the plan's no good.
Well, I do some of it myself and then I go to the experts in the areas, like some of the public work stuff. I'll go out to David Renshaw and I'll sit down and I'll talk with him and we'll go through that and make sure that it does what we say we will do.
How often, is that a year?
There's actually, an actual update calendar or schedule in the EOP and it's a two-year cycle. So every year, the contact list gets updated, but then the half of it gets updated one year and then the other half gets updated the next year.
A great, a great plan. And just when I went through the amount of information, as you say, it's in there is amazing.
And then to go on top of that, we also have to exercise it and practice it to find those holes because it's not perfect.
Yeah. A couple, now that brings up a couple of questions. With the turnover, the ongoing turnover at the county level with their ELC director, how, how is the city's plan does or does not fit in with the county's plan? And how does the county's plan either fit in or not fit into the city's plan?
Well, with the update in 2010, one of the requirements that was there because of the national incident management system is that all plans had to dovetail into one another. Okay? So ours dovetails into the counties, which dovetails into the states. Okay? If we need things from the state, there's an actual process. We can't go directly to the state. We have to go through the county unless for some reason the county's not available.
I guess I'm talking, not as far as the process, because I know the process fairly well. The, if we dovetail, as you say, into the county emergency operations, they dovetail in the state and the county's plan isn't up to date, but yet we have to dovetail to the county's plan. Doesn't our plan fall, a lot of our plan fall apart then?
There's that possibility, but they try and keep it up as well. They have, all the plans have that schedule. And I know Sue was, had been working really hard on making sure that it continues to be updated when it needs to be updated. I don't know who's going to replace her. They haven't named that person yet. And so I'm hoping that person, whoever it is, will continue that to where we can dovetail together all the way up to the state.
Okay. Then I just have one more question. And I'd like to see if the audience has any questions they may want to ask because this is a community-driven thing is, I noticed, I think you said in 2015, we did both at Lynnfield and High School, we did an active shooter drill. Was it just the police and fire department were involved? Were the hospitals involved? Were our ambulance partners, mutual aid involved? Was our physician advisor involved? Who's all involved in that? I mean, is it a, is it a full thing where everybody that needs to be involved in an active shooter drill is involved or are we missing pieces?
It hasn't been, everybody's been involved. Each time, it's been a little bit more and a little bit more. Eventually, we should get everybody involved in it. It just hasn't gotten to that point yet.
Okay, for our, and I don't know if you can answer this or you can't, probably the chief can. For our EMS division, our EMS services, the procedures we use for like an active shooter, does he sign off, does he sign off on all those procedures and sign off on the plan saying, yeah, as the physician advisor of McMinnville Ambulance or that this is a good plan and this plan will work or how, how does?
I'm going to turn it over to him.
He signs off on our medical treatment and protocols, not our operational plans.
Okay.
That's the answer to that question. That doesn't mean that we don't seek his input. And he was not involved in the development of the most, well, he was to an extent because he works at St. Vincent's Medical Center. And we piggybacked on the metro area's active shooter response plan and then tailored it to a smaller community response. So when we brought that plan over originally, it's still in draft on our desk. We're still working through it with law enforcement, trying to make sure that we're not stepping in places we, we don't want to get shot by accident and we don't want to, we want to be able to help but not hinder. And we want to be in the right place at the right time and provide those support services. So we have a plan at the fire department that's in draft, which is the one that we exercise and we train on. We haven't finalized it yet because there's been a change of administration at PD and there've been a lot of things happening that we just haven't, quite frankly, we haven't had a chance to get to that point. But it is on the radar and we are going to be having those meetings and Dr. Heiser will be involved in those things.
Okay, thanks, chief. Good answer. Now, what I'd like, Doug, and I just want to commend you again because I think this, I don't know how you're doing this in part-time, but I know in you, I'm sure it's much more than part-time just because I've known you for so long. So let me go out because this is such a critical thing for the future of the city of McMinnville and our citizens. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to know anything about our PIP? Let's start back here in the corner. Why don't you, again, even though we know who you are, just, I think we can pick you up on the mic if you just state, state your name and Rose will get it for you.
I'm taking the CERT training and trying to follow up with Doug on his Monday, second Mondays. Washington, Louisiana, the latest disaster pointed out how few people have insurance. Now, I suppose a lassitude about earthquakes, who might not cause anybody to go running off their mind. Is there any way of prompting or promoting a little better coverage because that certainly relieves some of the disaster consequences?
That would be part of getting people prepared, that preparedness piece is to look at earthquake insurance. I'll be honest with you, earthquake insurance is not cheap. It almost doubled my house insurance, my homeowner's insurance to add that earthquake rider on there. But I felt it was important enough because of where we live and what the potential is. There are some people that say, no, it's not worth it. They're going to just rebuild if they have to on their own dying. Can't force people to do it. We talk about it, getting insurance or looking at insurance along with everything else. We talk about it, getting insurance or looking at insurance along with everything else, so.
This is what I do for a full-time job, and I, and I don't sell it, I just educate people on it, and it's real challenging. And I've had a lot of success on the coast, talking to communities about it, because they realize that they're probably the, the, you know.
They're gonna take the brunt of it.
Yeah, they are. So, I mean, Canyon Beach and Seaside have me out all the time to talk to their communities, but I think you're right, having that, that's where the resiliency is. Indemnifying your risk and having somebody else carry that is, is how you recover. And I think, um, Sandy, uh, Superstorm Sandy, if they had more insurance there, that community could have rebuilt like that, and they just didn't.
You look at New Orleans, they're still not completely rebuilt after Katrina.
Yeah.
And part of it was because they didn't have the insurance.
One of the questions that I, I don't think this is gonna be so much of a factor here, but like you look at Seaside, if, a lot of people don't know what the municipality's decisions will be with a town like that. If that town gets wiped out, will they rebuild? So people don't know, without there being a commitment upfront, we will rebuild, um, the people are hesitant to want to buy the, the coverage. So what's the point of?
Great comments. Let me talk to, Daryl, did that answer your question?
I think yes.
Okay, let me turn it off. Anybody else have any questions? Susan, why don't you stand up and just state your name for the record, please?
Uh, my name is Susan Meredith, and my question is, when I hear the Cascadia subduction zone earthquake described and, and they just, you know, increase the, decrease the interval, I guess is the word. Um, and I think about, everybody talks about buildings collapsing and how are we gonna get to the hospital? To date, I've never heard anyone talk about the huge hazard that we have sitting two miles outside the city on Route 18, which of course, none of which at present will meet the 9.0 earthquake standard, because it was built before that standard was put in place. Um, there's 12 million tons of trash there, the substructure is going to collapse during the earthquake, um, it's going to contaminate the river, and I'm wondering, has anyone in the city or the county taken into consideration in this planning process, um, what that, what that collapse is going to do to the community?
Um, I'm gonna be honest, I haven't looked at it, and I can't speak for the county, cause I don't know whether they have or not.
I think not.
Probably not.
Susan, I would like to say.
To, to, um, you know, you talked about hazard mitigation, and what came to my mind is, it seems that the perpetrator, if that's the right word, um, it seems that waste management ought to be involved in disaster preparedness. They're the ones that are going to impact, you know, it's their facility that's going to impact our city, um, it's gonna contaminate the river, um, it's gonna flood the highways, um, we're, we're gonna be in a major disaster to start with. And people have said in the past, when I raised the issue, well, we have worse things to worry about than landfill collapsing. Well, I'm not sure, it's full of toxic material. So I think, it seems to me at least, for the health and safety of people, somebody needs to begin thinking about what we're gonna do when that, you know, when that happens.
You know, Susan, you brought up a good thing that I, I just think about, and I was telling our city attorney, you know, being that it's not in our jurisdiction, we really don't think about it a lot.
I know.
But if, if we do get the big Cascadia subduction, the first thing that's happened is probably some of the lower cells are gonna fail, because of liquefaction of the soils and everything. Which means it's gonna go into the Yamhill River Basin, which means it's probably gonna block the Yamhill River Basin. We're the first city downstream from the Yamhill River Basin. How it affects our ability to discharge our, discharge our affluent into the Yamhill River when there's no water flowing in the Yamhill River? How it's gonna impact the co, the coazine and how contaminated the coazine's gonna be because it's backed up from the Yamhill? I think, myself, I guess myself, from a, from a governmental official, elected body official, that that's one, to me, one of the biggest disasters we face in the city of McMinnville, and our citizens face, is the contamination of what happens in McMinnville. Not, not just because of the Cascadia subduction zone, but because of the, the impacts of a potential collapse of the, of the, of the landfill is gonna have on the citizens of McMinnville, because we have the Amhill Renner River running right through us.
I second.
Amen, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, as, as a matter of, uh, point, I, I don't know whether or not the county has taken a look at that as a, as a, one of their hazards, but as we go through our hazard mitigation process, that's not a problem for us to identify that and then come up with pot, potential options for the city to, and what.
Yeah, cause I'd really like to see, I'd really like to see that done, because it's not if, it's just when.
I'd be very grateful.
But that was a, that was a great, great, great question. Any more questions from the audience? None? Mark, you don't have anything to talk about tonight? Wow, wow, I'm impressed. Oh, yeah, I knew somebody would wait long enough.
Doug Johnson, um, I haven't looked at the website, but a quick question. You talked about, um, at, how many individual families have a preparedness kit? Is, is an outline of how to do that on the website?
There is. There's actually a brochure, there's two brochures that are talking about disaster preparedness kits. One of them is how to store stuff, and the other one is actually a calendar, which I think is kind of cool, because people think, it's gonna cost too much to put together a kit. Well, if you follow this calendar, within a year, you will have your kit put together, and it won't cost you an arm and a leg. You'd be surprised how much stuff you've probably already got in your house anyway. Um, and then if you follow it every year after that, and replace your perishables and your canned foods, which all have expiration dates, you will keep things rotated and be just fine.
I, I have something that I was, I was looking over the, all the different brochures on the website, and I think they're fantastic. I, I also noticed they're very geared towards adults, and so I would offer that, something that could add to this would be something that, that adults could share with their children, um, because unless it's, it's dinner time, the chance of school-aged child being apart from, uh, from their parent, um, is, is great. Uh, including the, you know, there's this great flow chart, the family member locator chart, um, but even that, it's very geared towards a, an adult and, um, and so that type of material with geared towards children, um, and especially as, you know, the unfortunate high divorce rate that we see, so many children have, um, uh, split homes, and, um, so a lot of what I saw kind of made me think of that and, uh, the suggestions with, um, you know, have somebody out of, out of state that you, that you contact. Well, who would that be for the child? And who, who would that be if you did have a, a dual household that the child needed to report to? So, um, that's a, that would be a suggestion, is to make it more kid-friendly.
I noticed also that the Community Center had a program this summer about disasters geared around kids, for the kids. And I've been meaning to get over there and talk to them about that, I just haven't had the time to do that.
Doug, I would imagine somebody, and I apprec, really appreciate your comments, Remi, cause that's a, that's a great point, that somebody at the national level would have those kind of brochures that are specifically geared to the smaller primary, to the middle tier, they, they, those have, they have, and to get them loaded to our website, I don't think would be a big.
No, I, I haven't seen any, but I haven't really looked for them. Uh, that's on my list of things to do.
Thanks, Doug. Any more questions for Doug? If not, Doug, great, great job.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything you do and keep up the good.
If any of you are interested in taking the CERT class, I've got applications, or anybody out there, I got applications and brochures.
Yeah, okay.
Did you want one? All right.
Okay, that being said, uh, this is the time we're moving to advice and information items, and we do have fairly short meeting right now, so we'll just run around. Is there anything important from any of the councilors on any committee or board assignment that they would like to report? Larry, do you have anything? I know the Parkway hasn't met, so you and I have been going to the Parkway in about two months now, so. Kelly?
Uh, we met today for the community choices, discussing the community survey, and we have kind of gone through the questions and identified both the questions that we thought were important, particularly the, what we get to put in extra. And we should be showing them to the council at the next council meeting. Yeah, approximately in two weeks.
Great news, I'm, I'm really looking, I'm really looking forward to getting our next survey.
Yeah, I think it, October 13th or 15th it goes out.
It sounds about right, I'd have to check.
And then there's the second one that goes out, and then I think we start getting the data about mid-November, correct?
Yeah, that's what I said.
Thanks, Kelly. Kevin?
Nothing, stay quiet.
Scott?
Um, we had our Visit McMinnville, um, board meeting, uh, last Wednesday, and I was out of town, but I have the agenda and can just kind of review that, um, minutes and the financial review, and we're on, we're on task with where we need to be financially. Um, uh, we have continued to, uh, be running, uh, the promotional piece that, that has McMinnville, uh, a good place to visit, and, uh, but we also had a presentation of our digital marketing strategy and how effective we are, we're being able to track that. Uh, we have the wine walk up and going, and there's an app now that'll allow you to do that on your phone. Uh, we have a dedicated photographer coming out in August, doing our, is it fall and winter shots, getting ready for that. Um, and, um, we had, uh, just some off, uh, some shoulder and off-season campaigns coming up, so that we can generate opportunities to bring more to town. Um, again, I can just say that a totally engaged board, doing some very good things, uh, thinking through very carefully. Uh, the last thing that we are looking at right now is, we were thinking of, do we need to have a, a visitor center? And we determined that instead of putting a lot of money into a visitor center, what we'd like to do is, uh, put together a, one of these, um, streamlined trailers that is gonna be, is gonna look like gold, that's Visit McMinnville, that can travel to places, and then, and then in town it can set up and, and be a visitor center, a mobile visitor center. So we're, we're contracting with the, the chamber to provide some of the services, so we're minimizing our, 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 our dollars spent on a visitor center with the thought that, uh, not this year, but possibly next year, of having a mobile visitor center to be used in town, out of town, uh, and the like. Kevin?
Yeah, when I was in Canyon Beach, their visitor centers actually run, it's a local nonprofit that, it's got a hundred-year lease, and the one in Lincoln City is the same way, they're like cultural center. So this entity, they put up all the money for, for all the improvements on the property and stuff, have they looked at doing something like that?
I don't know.
Those two centers are fabulous, and they're not owned by the city.
Um, we have not. I mean, what we're looking at right now is, you know, with the, the chamber is kind of that, that place that we've gravitated to, and so we're going to pay them for services provided. We were gonna enhance and really, uh, build out something at the chamber, but again, our whole thought is, you know, you be putting money, let's get something that's tangible, and then once we have that, that, that tangible asset, then we'll have vis, uh, volunteers come in. We really want to have control over the message. That's so critical for us, that, uh, we're very cautious not to, uh, put a third party in, in, in charge of that, because we lose control of our message and what we need to do. And so, uh, discussion's going on, but I'll take that back, Kevin, because there, those are two good examples. I'm not sure that Jeff has reached out, but, uh, again, this is, it's an active, good board that's, uh, moving forward.
Yeah. Remi, anything? Nothing whatsoever, huh? How about Mr. Rudin?
Nope.
Nothing, and I know, again, I say that the Parkway Committee hasn't, uh, met, but you do see that there's a lot of progress being made on the bypass, they're now putting up the traffic signals on both ends of, on 99 and 219, the traffic signals are now going in, and I think next week or the week after, they'll be re-striping it and getting all the turn lanes and everything in, so it's making good progress, so. Okay, that being said, Michael, do you have anything good for us tonight? I don't know, Heather's back there real quiet. Do you have anything good for us tonight, Heather? No? Rose? Chief Red? Chief Red, do you have anything for us?
Chief Blue.
Okay, Mr. Scale, Matt Scales, do you have anything for us?
Uh, Drag the Gut this weekend, just, please don't add to the commotion downtown, Mr. Mayor.
I never, I never do.
No, I don't know. No, that's all.
I keep the other councilors away from causing trouble downtown. So nothing else for you? And I think we've gotten all staffed. Does the council have anything else we need to talk about? So Martha, do you have anything you would like to bring up going on? David, do you? Hearing none?
Meeting adjourned.